Oh, thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus, because the strength, grace, and session is supplied. Thank you, Jesus, because even right now you are now missed, even right now. Even right now, we are opening our ears to hear, you're open our ears to hear. Thank you, Jesus, you, Jesus. Thank 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 you, Jesus. Because even right now, our hearts have been quickened. Our hearts have been quickened, our spirits have been quickened. Thank you, because our ears are inclined to hear, oh God, of you in the name of Jesus. Thank you, oh God, because you have opened the scroll of understanding for us. Thank you, because you have set before us a table of knowledge, a table of knowledge, and it is not just shared knowledge for the full of illumination. But as we dine, as we pick up plates and our cutlerys and we begin to eat of your word, we enter into an, an, an atmosphere, into an experience, oh God, of illumination, where your word is flesh, where your word becomes life, where your word becomes light, oh God. Thank you, Father, because our ears are inclined to hear your voice in the midst of all the things that we would say and think and do tonight. Thank you, because your voice is clear. Thank you, because your voice is distinct. Thank you, because your voice is very, very, very familiar for us. Thank you, heavenly Father. We start, oh God, we ask that you open up the books for tonight for us and bring us into that experience of illumination in the name of the Lord Jesus. Amen. Amen. Amen, amen, amen. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. How are you doing?
Good evening.
Good evening, Dami. How are you doing today?
I'm fine. It was good. It was good.
Good to know, it's good to hear from you. Dami, I'm happy that your day, well, still is going on. I'm happy that your day is good. Um. My day, thank you people for asking. I forgive you.
I was just about to ask, actually.
Oh, you see, you see, I forgive you, I hate. Um, so my day, my day is still on, actually. I, I had to be somewhere physically today. Against my will, but the Lord, I mean, um. Well, I, I needed to do that in service, so I, I have to do. It was stressful, um, and, I mean, from yesterday's, eh, what did they call it now? Ostile and bustle. I've not rested, you know, and I still have to go out today, so my body is extremely, yeah, extremely strengthened. Um, so, just in case I slip off on this call, you should just speak me up. I kid, I kid. Um, but yeah, I'm, I'm trusting God for strength. But I'm excited, I mean, I'm excited, because as I, as I remember it again, oh, they stated it tonight. I just remembered that, you know, yesterday was quite amazing times. That excitement launched me into, okay, let's see what God wants us to see today. So I'm really excited, but I'm, I'm tired. I'm going to be here, it's good to be here. I have a feeling that, you know, subsequently, T O T will be later at night, because I feel like, because I, I realize that people join um, around eight. I don't know if I'm the only one that has noticed, but I realize that people join like.
It's thirty. Then again, then again, it's legos. So except you are not going out. Yeah.
Right.
If you are, if you are going out, there's a chance you'll still be on your.
By this time, true. I can buy that eight safe. Yeah, yeah.
Traffic wheel.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I mean, I, I, I'm thinking of putting a poll out, you know, to see what time more people will favor. Um, not saying that we'll change it yet. I'm not, you know, saying we won't do it yet. But let's see. But yeah, so we continue the journey today. The people that are not here will, um, by the grace of God, listen to the replay. It's a daily commitment. Uh, okay, not daily yet. It's a weekly commitment, yeah, to, you know, um, to fellowship. And I think that one of the things that this will teach us is not just, oh, yes, exactly, let me join, but also discipline. I tell you that in more ways than one, this act of, oh, every Thursday and Friday, I have to be somewhere, even if I'm not the one teaching, has built a level of discipline in other areas of my life. So, um, yeah. So even if it's not convenient, you will be here. Even if I want to sleep right now. I'll just go and I recover, then I sleep, but I'm looking at my to-do list, I see I have like ten something things to do. I will still be here, because the word of God is life. And as we learnt yesterday, there is no other life. It is useless, actually. All the other things I want to do is useless, if I don't have the life of God in me. So I better strive to know that life, to get that life, to understand that life. That I'm not doing all the other things and living in vain, in worthlessness, in, 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 hm, what's the, what's the eh, description for vanity again? Without value-ness. You know. So we continue today. Um, sadly, I still don't have. But, um, we will read, we will make, is what we have. I don't know if Dami can help us with this translation. Um, just so that we can look at some words from there.
Can you just give me like two minutes?
Yeah, it's fine. We're not, we're not even starting there now.
Okay.
So, um, I will read, you know, I will read the whole chapter again, because again, because the whole counsel, if you know, you know. I'm sorry, the whole chapter again, um. And then we'll pick it up from verse six, yeah, sorry, from verse seven. Oh wow, so we did three verses yesterday. Interesting. Now let's do three, three verses every time. Okay, so N K G V, Psalms five. To the chief musician, the flute, a psalm of David. Give ear to my words, oh Lord. Consider my meditation. Give heed to the voice of my cry, my king and my God. For to you I will pray. My voice you shall hear in the morning, oh Lord. In the morning I will direct it to you and I will look up. For you are not a God who takes pleasure in wickedness. Nor shall evil dwell with you. The fools who shall not stand in your sight. You hate all workers of iniquity. You shall destroy those who, who speak falsehood. The Lord abhors the bloodthirsty and deceitful man. But as for me, I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy. In fear of you, I will worship toward your holy temple. Lead me, oh Lord, in your righteousness because of my enemies. Make your way straight before my face. For there is no faithfulness in your mouth. Your inward part is destruction. Your throat is an open tongue. They flatter with your tongue. Pronounce them beauty, oh God. Let them fall by their own counsels. Cast them in, cast them out in the multitude of their transgressions. But they have rebelled against you. But let all those rejoice who put their trust in you. Let them ever shout for joy, because you defend them. Let those also who love your name be joyful in you. For you, oh Lord, will bless the righteous. With favor you will surround him with. Surround him as with a shield. Amen. Amen. Okay, so we started at verse six yesterday. The Lord, you know, removed some kubuku and flogged us. What a mess. And shifted our wigs and, you know, gave us some strokes of the cane, which is good for us. Um, so today we continue in verse seven. If you're watching the replay and this is the first video you're watching, um, please listen to the previous replay so that you can understand my, you know, my satire. Um. So we continue verse seven today. But as for me, I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy. In fear of you, I will worship toward your holy temple. So backstory, you know. David had cried unto the Lord, acknowledged that come, bring, come, son. He will, God will hear his voice. Like, if there will be anybody in your temple shouting loud, praising your name, calling on your name, I will be the one. You know, that was in verse three. And then from verse four to, you know, six, started to talk about the character of God again. You know, God is not the God who takes pleasure in wickedness. When wicked things happen or wicked people thrive, or people do wicked things. God does not take pleasure in them. He may use them to his, you know, um, purpose, but it doesn't mean he takes, it doesn't mean that's his perfect will. Um, evil does not dwell with God. So David was also saying, um, the boastful, the proud, the foolish people, like we saw yesterday, shall not stand in his sight. And God hates all workers of iniquity. I think we defined the word hate yesterday, I think. Um, Dami, could you please, I don't know if you're ready now.
Okay, so is it the strong, Dami?
Yes, for hate, just through pressure, mainly.
Uh. That's in verse, verse six?
Yes. No, no, verse, um. You hate, verse five, sorry, verse five.
Okay. So it means, um, enemy, fool. Yeah, it's for enemies, actually, enemy or fool. I was talking about, oh yes.
So, um, people who, people who are workers of iniquity, they are God's enemies, that's what it means. Um, yeah, they are not, they are not his friends, they are not on his side. Um, you shall destroy those who speak falsehood. The Lord abhors the bloodthirsty and deceitful man, and we, you know, um, delved into all of that yesterday. Um, and then today, from verse seven, David was making a distinction between himself and those people. So all the wicked people, all the evil people, all the ungodly people, that, um, David had listed. From verse seven, he started to say, me, I'm not those people. And it's interesting, because when we start to hear people talk like this and say, oh, there are people who, you know, lie, people who do evil things, people who call upon the name of the Lord in vain, um, and all of that. Me, I don't do those things. There's every tendency that we think that person is being proud or being boastful. You know, just because, again, the, the culture of false humility has so destroyed us in the past, were no longer destroyed, because deliverance has come. But the way that David went from, you know, um, God hates these people, God has only, I haven't, having to do with these people, who are ene- enemies of God. And as for me, as by God's fair, you know, uh, how do you say that thing? Eh, eh. Eh, Abba's favorite, apple of God's eye, if you know, you know. Um, I didn't even know anyone who writes that, but okay. Um, but as for me, I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy. As far as I can see, that the difference between boasting in vain and, and acknowledging every good thing that is in you through Christ Jesus is the posture of your heart. Because two people can say the same thing, and one is saying it with so much pride, and the other is saying it with, just because it's the truth. If somebody hears David talk like this, they'll say, oh, you think you are without in a, you are so sanctimonious. Yeah, I have a friend that used that word a lot. You are so sanctimonious. You is without, let him be the first succor system. This is not telling that you are, you know, you are holy, you are holier than thou. Oh, what do you mean as for you? Well, as for me, I don't know about you, but as for me, you know, because again, the posture of David's heart is that it doesn't mean I'm perfect though. For me, I know that I'm on the Lord's side. It doesn't mean I'm better than you people. It doesn't mean that I've done anything to, you know, be rated higher. This, this is not me rating myself. This is me just choosing where I stand. There's a difference. You know, so, but as for me, because Abba's is a, is a huge eh headline. I can't listen to all those terrible things and what will happen to them, or what God does to them. And I said, but as for me, like, you just sounded like very prideful statement, like, what do you mean but as for you? We are all in this together, hello. You know. But it's always, it's always, um, and that's why we must always check our hearts, check our minds with the word of God. We must always judge our mind with the word of God, as it always. Because if the devil helps you to judge, calamity has come. And if the Lord helps you to judge it, like, without, like, if the Lord, uh, what's the word? Bypasses the word to judge it, like, if he has to call you out, ah, best believe that you will be disciplined, you know. So it's better for us to use the word of God, hm? The written word of God to judge our heart every time. Because if you spoken word of God needs to judge it, if it gets to that stage, you will chopkin. It, you know, that one is, uh, you'll be chopping. Because there's a difference between, um, you maybe breaking a verse, you know, and coming to your prayer to say, um, look, my mother, I have broken this expensive verse. It's not intentional, what it has happened. What do I do? You know? Oh, it's because I'm clumsy. How do I not be clumsy anymore? You know, it's in that, and who wrote this thing? Is that what you? Hey, what? Tell me, like, so, there's always a difference. I'm not saying God shouts when we are, but, but you get the point. So if you are not constantly taking account of your, um, interactions, if you're not constantly checking the state of your heart, I'm not talking about what you do now, I'm talking about even the state of your heart, not even just your actions. Like, the state of your heart, for example, you read something online and then fear comes in. Like, why did you allow that happen? How did that, you know, get there? Like, awareness, just being aware, just taking, taking stock of. Why am I acting like this? Why am I, you know, using my temper? Why am I being fearful? Why am I feeling proud? Why am I, um, hating on this person? You know how you? Sometimes I scroll through social media and then I see maybe a picture of a couple. And somebody says sending stones from, you know, India, or sending thunder from Tanzania, it's usually very interesting. Like, why, why did we get here? You know, when they say sending love from Nigeria. So people don't send love anymore now to romantic things. They send stones and thunders, very interesting. Um, but like, yeah, just check the state of your heart. Oh, somebody announced something in your, in your circle and then you just suddenly feel sad, like, don't be, don't be carried away. Those feelings are, um, I, for lack of a better explanation right now, saying neither good nor bad in, in themselves, you know. But like, the, the awareness that you have, the accountability that you have, first of all, with yourself. You should say, oh, Mariah, come, come, come. Let's not let this pass by. What, what am I feeling? I'm feeling what I'm feeling. But you have to say, Lord, um, there's a problem here. We need to, we need to resolve it. I can't be feeling like this, you know. But like, just the constant checking of the state of your heart is very important, because that's what will tell, um, whether your actions are holy or not. Because somebody can say, well, eh, and the person actually just is mocking you. And somebody can actually say sorry and they mean the sorry. So the actions in themselves are not, yeah, they're not the determinant of whether you're good or bad. The intention of your heart is, the motive of your heart is. And that's why they would always, always say, search my heart, if there's any iniquity in me, search me. So, yeah, that was, you know, an important branch. So David says, but as for me, I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy. I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy. Please let's see what house means.
Okay, so house is a okay, saying court, daughter, do, dungeon, home, palace, prison, steeple, temple, household, yeah.
Did I hear daughter?
Yeah, daughter is the, I was surprised too.
Wow. Okay.
Come into the.
Ah, all right. Um, Lord, please help us. Daughter, okay. Anyway, I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy. Um, because David was talking about the, the community of God, not necessarily the temple, like the building, um, but like the presence where God dwells. You know, wh- wherever God is, is his house, anyway. Um, because God does not have one static place that he lives. Wherever God dwells in his house. And I have established again and again, um, over the course of this series, of these teachings, um, Zion is God's peace. Zion is where God dwells. Anywhere God dwells is God's house. If God dwells in your heart, then that's his house. If God dwells in your house, then that's his house. God dwells in your car, then that is his house. If God dwells in your, hm, wardrobe, which is weird, I know, I guess, are you looking the Lord? Um, that's his house. So wherever God dwells is his house. So, and that's why we see the word household there as well, I mean, people, a, 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 a cluster of people, you know, joined for a purpose, living in a place for a purpose, staying in a place where purpose. Even as we have gathered tonight, this is God's house. Um, so yeah, and that's why anywhere David is, he can call upon the name of God. Doesn't necessarily have to go to the temple. He's in the wilderness, running from Saul, he will call upon God. He's eh, running from Absalom, he will call upon God. Like, he doesn't necessarily have to be in a temple, you know, to, um, call upon anyone below that. That tells you that wherever the Lord is, wherever the spirit of the Lord is. I was about to say, there's liberty. Wherever the spirit of the Lord is, is his house. So, but as for me, I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy. Please let's look at multitude.
Okay, um, multitude, abundance in many respects, common, excellence, increased, many, much, plenty, age. Very excellent, abundantly. Greatness.
Well, the understanding that just came to me right now is that, you know, as we were saying yesterday, that we are all evil wicked men save for the goodness of God. Save for the life of Christ that we now have access to. David here is saying, I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy. Because there is a but at the beginning of that verse, but as for me. So meaning that I may as well be a part of this evil people. I may as well be a part of this ungodly people. But there is a multitude of the mercies of God that allows me to enter even in my field. That allows me to be different, even in my weakness. Because the difference between us and these people that David listed earlier, it's not that we do different things. Not like, oh, they do this, so I don't do it, and that's the difference. No. The difference is we have an identity that David not have. We have an identity that they do not have. The boastful, the, because at one point or the other in our lives, we make boasts foolishly. At what point or the other in our lives, we speak vain things, do vain things, you know. At what point, at one point or the other in our life, we speak falsehood. I mean, no, no, not necessarily like lying, oh, this person did not come, or this person came. Like falsehood is also, um, our Holy Spirit, give, give, give me a trance. Falsehood is also imaginations, you know, of things that are contrary to, to, to God's truth. Falsehood is also a lie that is not in speech, but in system. So let's say, for example, um, somebody says, oh, you know, if you are not, if, this one is even very, very interesting. If you are thirty and you are, and you are, um, unmarried, there is something wrong with you, or, you know, you cannot enter into the fullness of God. Or, I think, there was one prayer meeting I was, I was, um, listening to, I wasn't on it, I was listening to it, you know, some days back, and, sorry, hold on. Sorry, there was one prayer meeting that I was listening to, you know, days back. And the person was saying, you know, um, because eh, eh, the Lord wants everyone to be married. Um, so if you are married, indeed, you are not in the will of God, you are not in full. And I just opened my mouth like, hey, Mariah. No, nothing in the will of God do. I mean, that was a joke. But like, I was shocked. That is falsehood, because it is not the truth. I mean, in that situation, she wasn't necessarily lying, like, you know, telling somebody a lie. But that idea, that ideology, that is falsehood, you know. Oh, oh, I have to beat my children before they are says, that's falsehood. You know, um, or, um, um, oh, children cannot be baptized in the Holy Ghost, is falsehood. Because it's not true. It's not true. I have a mouth of babes and stockings, God has ordained strength, so if you can, if, if the old men can dream, then the young men can too, you know. Um, well, the old men can see visions, then the young men can too. There is no, there, there is no such thing as, oh, you have to have attained a certain age before the Lord pours his spirit on you. You know, I mean, Samuel was owed twelve when he became a priest, I think. So, um, listing all of those things and seeing that even he himself is not actually better than them, or, or different in the, in character, in, in attitude. But he had an identity, because he was very aware. They said, but as for me. Like, yeah, 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 yeah. I know that the boastful shall not stand in your sight. I know that you hate all workers of iniquity. I know that you destroy those who speak falsehood. I know that you hate the people who are bloodthirsty and deceitful. But as for me, I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy. I will come into your presence. I will gather together with I will gather together in a sacred place, in a consecrated place, in the mist, in the plentiness, in the abundance of your mercy. Because we know that it is by the mercies of God that we continue. Because we are worse than the people that we judge. And this is not a call for us to stay worse, you know. But the truth is, if we are actually going to take stock of our, um, of our engagements, take stock of our attitude, only God can help us, you know, because if we, we are wicked men. So except for the, for the life of Christ and the mercies of God, the abundant mercies that David is talking about here, we too, we are God's enemies. You know. So David is saying, I will come, you know, into your house, or come into your presence, um, where your mercy is abundant. Where your mercy is a lot, where I know that, I'm surrounded by your mercy, so before your presence comes, the side of your mercy has already spoken for me. And in this case is Jesus. I would have just even thanked God for His mercies. I would have thanked God for His mercies. Because it's only God's message that can make provision for our immunities. And still make it possible for us to be holding, for us to be able to journey with Him. I want us to just thank God for His mercies. We take it for granted a lot, because we don't know the implications of not having it. But I want us to thank God for His mercies. I want us to thank God for His mercies. I want us to thank God for His mercies. Thank you, Jesus. Oh, thank you, heavenly Father. Thank you, heavenly Father. We often take these things for granted, because it's our life, so we don't know, we don't, we don't know, we don't know what, what you have given us. We don't understand the magnitude of what you are giving us. And sometimes we still have the nerve to complain, we have the nerve to be asking for things, and be be holding grudges and be murmuring, because we can't get those things. Instead of first of all acknowledging that you have been merciful towards us. Instead of first of all acknowledging that you have been merciful towards us, you can gather together like this. Some people who have been listening to this recording have not even prayed today, some people have not read their Bibles today. And we're not many years, so I can't really say people here. But we can come together like this and seek to the Lord, and he will still show us himself, it is by his mercies. It is by his mercies. Thank you. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. But as for me, I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy. In fear of you, I will worship toward your holy temple. In fear of you, please let's see what fear means, what worship means, and what, um, temple means.
Okay, so fear. Fear means, um, morally reverence, dreadful. Fearfulness. So that's what fear means. Reverence.
Yes, the dictionary meaning.
For reverence.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so reverence means, um, profound awe and respect, normally in a sacred context. Then an act of showing respect. Such as the bow, the state of very revered. Okay, okay, that which deserves or exact manifestations of reverence, is the same. Okay, so, um, that is it. To show.
Thank you.
Honor. Yeah.
Um, profound awe and respect, profound awe. If you are just consumed, like, oh my God. And that just tells you that, you know, people, celebrities are their gods. They say, oh, I'm starstruck, it's a lie, you are, you are erecting idols in your, in your very coro- coro front. Like, you can see something and you just go, ah, just saw. Mario, yeah, let me not go and, um. Let him not arrest me. And you just think. You have revealed your man, hey. Okay, I, I keep, I do not keep. Yeah, because I mean reverence is, is, is something that sets God apart from, from men, from any other thing. The way that we respect God, um, it, it sets. Sets us. Rather, sets God, sets the worship of God, even from the respect for him, you know. I cannot see my husband now, and I now think, I see my husband and I now start to cry. Say I'm so overwhelmed by your presence, you know, like, I mean, that's not gonna happen. So, um, and that is what we do to God. Um, yeah, so, please, let, let's see what worship is, and what temple is.
Okay. Worship. To reflectively, to postulate, rather, to postulate especially. Reflectively in homage to royalty on God. To bow down, to crouch, to fall down. Unbelie-. So, okay, unbelievably, make obeisance. Okay, yeah, to worship. To stoop, to crouch, that's what it means.
So it doesn't mean you cannot, you cannot worship while standing.
Okay, that's another angle.
All the worship I've been doing is saying, oh, glory to Jesus, while standing in that place. Okay, now, um, but I mean, I, 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 I feel like there are levels, you know, or depths, yeah. I think that's the word, depths, you know, to worship, in, in, in that, um. You can be driving, for example, and you are, as you're moving, you know, you're just. You're just conscious of the presence of God, you're conscious of the, of the might, might, yeah, might and sovereignty of God. And that just moves you to, you know, sing songs to him, pray in Thanksgiving, or pray and worship to him. And then you're driving, like, you can't fall on your face, you know, with that. But, um, there's also a depth that would require you to, be you're in your room, or you're in church, or. Like you are in a place where you can actually fall. Um, and then you become overwhelmed, so in the first instance, you are conscious of it, like, oh, you know, God is here. God is in me, I'm with God, like, we're having an engagement, and then I'm just, you know, pouring some. Oil on, on my altar, and just honoring the Lord with that. Um, there is a consciousness, but it gets to, to a depth where there is an overwhelm. Of that presence, of the realization of that phenomenon, like, maybe your spirit now came and then he. When he just fell, no, and same, from even from you, like, even from your own posture. There is an overwhelm, yeah, of the presence of God, or the knowledge of the presence of God. And then that just consumes you, and of course, you fall face back, so, don't, don't, don't kid here, don't kid here. Um, yeah, so, so I, I feel like, you know, there are depths, but you can. You can worship God, and I think it's important to know that David said in fear of you, so like. At that point where my face is flat, I'm not even, I'm not, I'm not trying to do two things at the same time, I'm just completely overwhelmed by God's presence. Like, be, be there, you know, be there actually. Um, and this is kind of worship that you are not thanking God for anything. In fact, I'm not even thanking him for his God, no, there's no thanks in it, you know, it's just deeply worship. And just saying, um, it's, it's like, it's like, um, the way they are called, the way they, they. Go to their shrines and then pour oil, you know, on that thing, just to service you. You know, that, that, they, they are not calling anything, um, they are not, they are not thanking their deities for anything. But it's just an act of, of, um, of worship, it's, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's part of the rituals, you know. So in that state where we are worshiping for face flag, where we are overwhelmed by his presence, we're not thinking of, oh, God is so big, so my problems are gone, no. We're not thinking of, God is so mighty, so, um, I'm not going to be afraid anymore, and I, I have strength now, and all those confessions that we take. No, we're just, we're just, we're not, we're not even really thinking, we're just getting drowned in the presence of God. And that's all that we can do, you know, fall face back and just be there. Um, so yeah, so David says in fear of you, in profound awe and respect and honor and reverence for you. Like, the all, the utmost, the utmost, um, um, honor you can give to anything, or the utmost kind of honor. I will worship toward your holy temple, so, um, yes, let's look at temple. Okay, let's look at, hmm. The word toward there, what does that mean, like, what does it mean in the sentence, you know? I will worship toward, is it, is it saying, is it saying I will, because I mean, in the preceding, um, sentence, it says I will come into your house. And from the definition that I read, house is, you know, where God wills, so David wasn't, he, he wasn't talking about temple there. And then in the next verse, it now says temple, so like, what else towards, I mean, let's see, let's see.
Yes, so from strong, there's no meaning for toward.
There's no meaning.
Yeah, there's no reference or translation for towards.
Let me see, K J V, maybe, um. Maybe there's a difference, different, um, linguage there. Let me see now, seven, so K J V says, but as for me, I will come into thy house in the multitude of thy mercy. And in thy fear will I worship toward, so toward is also used. Um, let's see, N L T. Um. N L T says, because of your unfailing love, I can enter your house, wow, can you see? Because of your failing love, I can enter your house. Meaning that if not for that love, even me, I'm destroyed, wow, okay. Um, I can enter your house, I will worship at your temple with deepest awe. Okay, so I think that word is just saying I'm going to be in, like, in a place, in a, um. Physical location, so yeah, okay, so let's see what temple means.
Okay, so temple. A large public building, sometimes a palace, or a temple.
So yeah, so, so, right, physical, um, a physical place, a physical building, um. So, but as for me, I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy. In fear of you, I will worship toward slash in your holy temple. Okay, thank you, Lord. So, it says, lead me, oh Lord. Because again, we, we need to realize the context of this, of this. Yes, David is acknowledging the ways of the evil, or be rather, calling them out and saying, you know, evil, evil people do this, evil people do that. But I think verse seven, eight, uh, and nine, actually, you know. Sort of tells that David is not saying I'm better than these people. He's just saying that me, I know that I have access to God's mercies. And because of that mercy, I can approach him. Because of that mercy, I have a different identity, so I may. And please, I want us to take this with, you know, the spirit of God, I may tell lies. But I am, I do not have the nature of a liar. I may fall, but I am not a failure. I may be discombobulated sometimes, but I do not have the spirit of fear. So there is an identity and there is character. Or, well, behavior, I mean, not character, because character sort of tells your identity, but there is behavior. You know, I may feel jealous once in a while, but I do not have a jealous spirit. Or an envious spirit. So the difference between the children of God, or the sons of God, who are walking towards perfection. And the evil people is that we have an identity. So David is saying, you know, God destroyed those who speak falsehood. He doesn't, um, he hates the bloodthirsty and the deceitful man. But as for me. I will come into your house in the multitude of your mercy, because me, I know that if not for the mercy anyway, I knock on my gates standing. So because of that, I will worship you in your holy temple. It gives us a lot, um, clarity. Because of your unfailing love, I can enter your house, or worship at your temple with deepest awe. And verse eight says, lead me in the right path, oh Lord. Or my enemies will conquer me. Make your way plain for me to follow. What if I tell you? Okay, let me not, um, jump ahead of myself, please, let's quickly see what enemies mean.
So enemies. Who's tired, to be hostile. Okay, an opponent, that's what it means.
Hmm, I wish I could see, um, is there any ref-? Um, occurring in other places, that reference, that, that.
Okay. Enemies, that's what you, uh, occurring in other places, enemies, that's what you just put.
Did he put reference verse, did he click that occur? Or? Sorry?
No. I can't click it, it's, it's showing that it occurs in five verses.
Yeah, yeah, I need to find those.
I can't click that.
So, okay, what, what's the word, what's the Greek word for it?
Um, sh- Sora. S H E W. I think R E R.
R A R, I mean.
Oh, sorry, that's the pronunciation, I tell you, we're spending the venue, S H E R E R. S H E R E R.
Trying to find. So there, there's a reason why, you know, I want us to look at where it is used. S H E R E R, okay. To be an enemy. Sorry, just give me a moment to confirm my. Okay, so the number is eight, three, two, four, yeah?
Yes, it's, it's three, two, four.
Okay, so it's in Psalms four, it's in Psalms five. Um. I don't even think it's reused like that.
Yeah, I think this particular one, maybe there are different, different enemies.
Exactly, that, that's what, that's what I was trying to, that's what I was trying to re-get. Uh. One is to be tied up. The reason is because I wanted to be sure if. If the definition. If the definition. Of this, you know, is, um, if he meant enemy as in. An opponent that is, that is physical, like a, a human opponent, or. So when, when Jesus is, um, the enemy of a man is in his own, in his own household. Yeah, so Jesus was not talking about, um, people. He's not talking about, oh, your brother is your enemy, your sister is your enemy, no. Talking about members of your body, as in, you as dummy, me as Mario, my enemy is my thoughts. My enemy is myself, you know, like, members of my own household, meaning my, like, the compartment of my body, of me, not my body, of me. My body, my spirit, my soul, sometimes your body is fighting against your spirit, sometimes your spirit is fighting against your body. Wants to do something, but he's saying, no, that, go and carry that next, and watch. As, as an enemy, because it's against, it's against the will of God for you in that moment. God has said you are light, you're saying, no, I, maybe I'm, I'm a stammerer, what will I say, you know, how will they hear me? Like, that is an enemy, you know, or there is a, there's an inferiority complex, it is an enemy. This is another, oh, psychological, you need to work on yourself, no, no, you need to fight the enemy, actually. So that's what you're just saying, that is, I, I need to be sure if the enemy that David was referring to here. Um, meant like enemy, meaning, you know, their thoughts, their system, structures, stronghold. That are, um. Yeah, yeah, that he needs to be led away from, because if the Lord does not lead us, and we lead ourselves, we will become our own enemies. You know, and that's why we submit ourselves to you, that's why we submit our ways to the Lord, because if the Lord does not lead us. Our own struggle. So I need to be sure if the enemies that is referring to here are people that can fight with swords and swords, or. If he's referring to, you know, systems and ideologies that he himself is surrounded by. Um, I'm not, I'm not seeming to be able to. To find that definition, I would, I would, I think I would. Hmm, hmm. Okay, okay, I'm seeing some verses, so. So, um, Psalms five, verse eight, well, this one that we just read. Um, Psalm twenty-seven, verse eleven says, teach me thy way, oh Lord, and lead me in a clean path. Because of my enemies, are you seeing that there's a, there's a difference, it's saying, lead me. Because. I don't think it's a physical, you know. Fighter, I don't think it's a, maybe I'm a right, I'm a lecayt, it's a question, I think that. Um, the enemy is, in fact, I couldn't, I mean, I'm even thinking that, you know, it's. It's the previous five and six, those, those things, those things that he listed, that are his enemies actually. Because the one is not against you and your neighbor, the one is against you and everything that, you know, stands in the way of your, um, manifestation, so. If it is a lying tongue or evil eyes, lustful eyes, that's an enemy. So, yeah, and I mean, we need God to lead us away from that, so I'm, I'm trying to also see, um. Psalm fifty-nine, Psalm fifty-six, verse two. Um, my enemies will daily swallow me up, for there be many that fight against me. Would I almost die, okay. Psalm fifty-nine, verse ten, the God of my mercy shall prevent me, God shall let me see my desire upon my enemies. I think, I mean, maybe when we get to those, those chapters, I don't understand. I mean, it's, it's a food for thought, you know, because it also mean that there are some enemies that we too, we need to sit down and fight. See that nonsense laziness is an enemy, fight it, you know, invisibly is an enemy, fight it. Um, yeah, okay, 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 that's good. So lead me, oh Lord, in your righteousness, and, and, I think, I think we are right, you know, I, I really hope that the Lord expand. Well, I'm praying that the Lord will expand this word in our hearts, because what he's saying, lead me in your righteousness. Because see where he's coming from, verse five and six, those are not righteousness things. Actually, verse four, four, five and six, those are unrighteous acts and unrighteous people. And David is saying, lead me, oh Lord, in your righteousness. Because of my enemies, so because of the evil that is, that is, that I'm prone to do. Because of the iniquity that I'm prone to walk in, because of the falsehood that I'm prone to speak. Because of the deceits that I'm prone to do to my next friend, neighbor, man, customer. Lead me, oh Lord, in your righteousness. Because if the Lord does not lead us in his righteousness, everything that we do will be against his will. If the Lord does not lead us in his righteousness, if we are not joined together with the righteousness of God, and we become one, and that. Everything that we do, our thoughts, we do, now begins to become the thought of God, our talks, our actions. Now begin to become the action of God, you know, will be well in your righteousness. But let us just quickly see what that means. Oh, can you imagine, is it only stated here, um. I think it is the, okay, let me see if I can repeat it, um. Psalms twenty-five, verse four and five. Um, Psalm seventy-seven, verse eleven, and Psalm thirty-one, verse three. Oh, okay, thank you, yes, Psalm seventy-seven, verse eleven, and thirty-one, verse three. Wow, interesting, I think, I think we're finally, you know, really arriving at eight and understanding. Interesting, thank you, thank you so much, very interesting, so you can see the references. Show me the right path, oh Lord. And I, when we read it, but I don't want us to read and just hide it. Forget who, you know, or not be present, because if we don't, if you don't see the link between four, five, six, and then seven, eight. You may not understand the whole context of that, and it may not bring truth to you. Because David was not even talking about people that were killing his ear and sword and arrow. He's talking about unrighteousness, that's the enemy, can you imagine? Because show me the right path, oh Lord, point out the road for me to follow, you see him that, he's talking about. Sonship and our culture in kingdom, our character, sons of God. Lead me by your truth and teach me, for you are the God who saves me. Meaning, I, I stay gone, I'm a falsehood teacher, I'm the king of them all. So except you show me the right path and you lead me and you point the road for me to follow, I will work in the council of your body. Without faith, it is impossible to please God. If you think that you can please God by knowledge, you have, you have even failed from this path. Without leaning on God, it is impossible to walk with God, it is impossible to work in righteousness. Lead me by your truth and teach me, because if God does not teach us, we will be a king of falsehood. Hopefully, we will walk in the council of them, because we will not know, we will not know. And that's why that chapter says, you know, but delight yourself in the love of the Lord, because when you start to do that, then you, then the word actually teaches you. I mean, now, we, we are currently being taught by the word, and I mean that, you know, um, um. A- as a double, uh, and, and tandere, I don't know how they pronounce, I've been, like, we're being taught by the word, which is Jesus. But we're also being taught like by the written word. If you don't immerse yourself in the word of God, you will not know that there is something like this. You think all your enemies are the people that are in your village, and they are tying red scarf and black wrapper, you know. Guess what, we have a word that we, that we contend in daily, it is not with people. We do not wage wars like humans do, as, as, as that scripture says. Weapons of our warfare, they are not swords and shi- and shields and spears, no, they are truth. Righteousness against unrighteousness, justice against injustice, truth against lies. You know, hope against despair, love against hatred, that is our fight. So, um, the next one says, Psalm, Psalm twenty-seven, verse eleven says, teach me how to live. Are we seeing that the enemy is there is actually not spears and swords? But confirming it again and again, it is so not spears and swords. Teach me how to live, oh Lord, lead me along the right path, for my enemies are waiting for me. The enemy is here, they are not Amalekites and Amorites, no, 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 no. No, 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 they are not, no, they are not, they are not, I'm, I'm Amalekite. They are our own selfish desires. They are this, this sin that is locking at the door, waiting to, you know, also enter, open the door and bam, enter. That is the enemy, that is the enemy. Psalm thirty-one, verse thirty says, you are my rock and my fortress. For the honor of your name, lead me out of danger. I, 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 I mean, when we get there, um, I pray that the Lord will remind us of this moment, so that we can immerse ourselves in that as well. But I know that there's a whole story to that, but, but as we can see so far, you know, the enemy, as we have, as God has helped us establish. Is not a person, and is not a group of people. False ideologies, it's unrighteousness, it is sin, it is weight, everything that does not agree with God's will is our enemy. So let's go back to, um, the Bible verse, it says, lead me, oh Lord, in your righteousness, we just completely see what righteousness is.
Okay, righteousness, righteousness means, um. Justice, virtue. Prosperity. Um, that's it.
So I think we can summarize it to the goodwill of God, the, the, yeah, the goodwill of God. Okay, make your way straight before my face. So many ways in this world, so many, 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 many ways. And it is very easy for children of God to just enter the water. And think, oh, the way here is just, oh, there's just water there, you know, it's really easy, through the way, it's just, you just have water, you are swimming. Gotcha, inside the water, if you left bad road like this, I just think, oh, you know, it's the way, but I mean, there's water here. You know, this is a prayer that we should sit with, eh, until sweat and blood comes out of our body, we should only live. Because really, really, really. Except we follow to the, the way of the Lord, enter into that, we walk, let me run on that, we, on that way. Our leg gombed to that way, we are deceiving ourselves. There is no true prosperity, forget how many money you are getting from all the other ways, forget how many influence, how many fame, you know. How much fame, how much popularity, how much satisfaction, actually. We're getting from all the other ways, if the way of the Lord is not set before you, if you don't understand the way of the Lord. You would have prospered in iniquity. You would have prospered in iniquity, if the way of the Lord is not set straight before your face like this, like you sit and say, ah, okay, I know that this is God's will. You would have prospered in iniquity. And that's the worst thing that can happen to man. So that's why people tell you, ah, I have money, you know, you know, when, when you call out unrighteousness. You know, in this generation, they will say, eh, look at you, you are here, you are saying wanting, 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 that person can buy your old generation. Because we, we've been, we have reduced prosperity to cash, how much money you have. Thinking that when you die, it will matter, it won't, you cannot use a one million dollars, a million uncountable trillion, billion. Kazillion dollars to buy a soul. That's why when Jesus was saying, like, what will it cost, what, what, what would you have gained? Because in the scheme of things, on the scale of, of righteousness, on the scale of the world. By the word now, I mean, Jesus Christ. The cost of somebody's soul is the blood of God. And that blood is more valuable than all the monies in the world combined together in one house. So in the scale of things, Jesus is asking, like, what will it cost, what will it, wha- uh, how, how would you have gained, like, what would you have gained? If you, if you, you know, have acquired all the world. In whatever, um, definition, and then your soul is lost. Because if you put together all the things that you have acquired, actually, it cannot buy you your soul, that's how expensive it is. So if you are prospering in the world. And this obviously that prosperity is not good, in fact, it is necessary, it is God's will for us. But if you are quote unquote prospering outside of the way of the Lord, you would have been, it's an effort. Yes, you are getting all the money, yes, you're comfortable, you have it in your house, you know, you have all the cash, you can eat whatever you want. But guess what, your soul is dying. And when you die, when the person dies, not only will you not enter God's presence, even in the hell that you're going, that the person is going to. They will still, the judgment that they still give you there, oh, you don't wanna, you don't wanna know. Now, for the sons of God, let's say that, oh, you actually now become God's child. God's child, you know, you're not, you're not, you're not in a kid, I mean, say, ah, come, let's, let's, let's help, let's just help, let's just save the dead. You deserve it, or you are worth it, I mean, because of God's mercy, you are worth it, but it's not as maybe we earned it, eh. It's a con, let's just help you, picked you up on the street that just gave you, you know, his, his life. I said, eh, take, believe in this, but because you've not found out what the way of God is, and, you know, will to walk in it. When you get to heaven, you, you will enter God's presence, but you will be judged too. But God will ask you, eh, come, come for my son, because we forget that the servant with the five talents. And the one with the two talents, and the one with four talents, they were all servants, none of them was an outcast, none of them was, um. You know, borrowed from outside, they all belonged in that, in that, what would I call it, in that establishment, you know. So the, the, the way we do, we are all children of God. When the master comes back, he will now ask us, my darling, eh, servant, so you have, um. I have gone out, you know, want to be my father, I've, I've, I left the kingdom in your hands. And I assigned this portion of the work to you, eh, what have you done? Tell me, Jerry, give me accounts. Where's the, where's, where's my profits, I invested in you by giving you five talents, let's see. Um, so, yeah, I'm back, where's my reward, where's my, where's my return, rather, my profit? Ah, Lord, I'm sure, I'm Jerry, my dear, you know, we will be judged too. So based on this, the way that is set before us, we did not walk in it and, and, and do accordingly. We also will be judged. That's why, I, I think it was in Paul that said it, you know, that would be saved, but. And so we pass through fire, like, just me, okay, but like, we're saved, but, ah, if not for God. You know, well, not, not us, but like, the, those children, hopefully, that is never us. We will leave our lives to the fullness of God's purpose for us, and will attain that, that end, that expected end that God has for us. In the name of Jesus. David is praying, eh, says, lead me, oh Lord, in your righteousness, because of my enemies, because of the things I'm fighting against. Is you and God that know, actually, is you and God that know, this one is always something that you can be sharing everywhere, is you and God that know. I, I mean, doesn't mean that it is terrible in that sense, but because of how much you need to win that war. It is because it's between you and God, you know, make a like God, if you don't help me, ah, no, invisibility, no, and I need it. You know, because we, we think that character is not important to God, we think that character development is, you, you know. I, you know, we do it now, self-development, oh, self-growth, no, 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 it is spiritual first, it is spiritual. You don't know how to breathe your tongue, come on. That's my character development, you know, the, I mean, it's character development, but it's spiritual. Character is a spiritual thing. Stature is a spiritual thing, and I don't even mean like physical stature, like attaining a place in the spirit, is, 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 in the spirit, you know. And I say, okay, now I'm grown, I have acquired influence, oh, now I can talk to people, I have seven thousand disciples, oh, no, 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 no. It is a spiritual thing. So character is a spiritual thing, and that's why I say the, the fruit of the spirit is love. Actually, that's a teaching for another day, but, um. The, the, the show of love, the dwelling in love, talking in love, you know, the spirit of joy, um, um, um. Peace, you know. Um, faithfulness, long-suffering, endurance, like those things, they are characters, actually. They are characters, so they are spiritual firsts, spiritual firsts. So those are the things that we're trying, that's our friend, and we're trying to run away from loss, from envy, from jealousy, from lie. I've been lying. So lead me, oh Lord, in your righteousness, because of my enemies. Make your way straight before my face, let it be, let it be the thing that I see daily. Let it be the thing that I see daily, let it be the thing that I see daily. Let it be the thing that I see daily, actually, I think I want us to just, you know, pause here and just pray that. Lord, set your way before me, let me see, let me always see your way, let me always see your way. Let me always see your way, every time that I open my eyes and let it be, let it be, let it be very straight. Let it be very straight before me, as scripture says, we hear a boy behind you that says, this is the walk of faith, walk in it. Uh, let your way always be set before me, let my eyes be open to see, let my eyes be open to see, let me not be blind to your way. Let me not be blind to the path that you want me to take, let me not be so overwhelmed by someone else's way. By someone else's way of life, by someone else's mode of living, that I become blind to what the path that you have set before me. That I now become, you know, familiar with the councils and the way of the ungodly and the way of sinner and the seat of the scum folk. Let, let, let me, let me not follow familiar paths, let me follow your way. However lonely that may be, however comfortable, however inconvenient that may be. Lord, let me always follow your way, let my eyes be open to see your way set before me. Let my eyes be open to see your way set before me. And let, let that be what I walk on, let that be what I walk on, even if it means I walk alone. I mean, the truth is, but never actually walking alone, but even if, even if it means it feels as though I walk alone, let me always choose your way. Let me always see your way, because you need to see first to know that that's where you need to walk. And the way that the devil does it, he presents seven thousand options and look good to us. And I would just think, oh, I mean, the Lord has given me free will, so it's my choice. I mean, I have a choice, I have a choice. You don't have a choice. You don't have a choice. You don't have a choice. And that's why you need God's guidance, because your choice is, 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 is for people. Your choice is now, your choice is now. So you need the leading of the Holy Spirit to say, okay, this is the way that I have said before you. Yes, all the other ways, they seem good. They seem good, but my way is God. So we will choose God before good. We will choose God instead of good. Lord, help me to always see your way. Help me to always, always see your way in every of my decisions, in my thoughts, in my actions, in my interactions with people. In my interactions with the things that you have, you know, put in my care, in my interactions with the guarding that you have given me to tend over. Let me always see your way. Let me always see your way. Let me always see your way, that I may set it before and follow it, that I may walk in it. That I may walk in it, oh God, lead me, oh Lord, in your righteousness because of the enemies that I daily contend with, Lord. And I may win, and I may win, and I may win. I know that the enemy tries. I know that the devil tries. I know, I know, I know. But I, but I know that you try harder. And this gathering right now is proof that God is trying harder than the enemy. In fact, it's not even a, it's even a, it's not a comparison, because God has gone by five thousand steps ahead of me and prepared places for us. Lord, I thank you. I thank you, because I know that you are always ahead of the adversary. So Lord, I join myself with your way. I join myself with your way. I join myself with your way, to be led there, to be led, to be led. I may lead the life that you have called me to be. Honestly, that's the goal, that's the goal, that's the goal, that's the goal of our gathering right now. That's the goal of waking up early to seek the face of the Lord. That's the goal of the immersing ourselves in the, in the, in the, in the truth of God's word, is so that we can live God's life. Yes, because it is, it is vanity if we live a life that is separate from the life of God. And then, then our salvation has no point. There is no point, there is no use for it. So Lord, help us. Lead us, lead us, lead us, lead us, oh God. Let your path be straight before us. Let it be clear to us. Let it be clear to us. Let it be clear to us. Make your way straight before our faces, oh God, that we may walk in it. I mean, that we may walk in it. That we may walk in it, that we may walk in it. In the name of the Lord Jesus, in the name of the Lord Jesus. In the name of the Lord Jesus. Oh, teach us how to live, oh God. Teach us how to live, oh God. Lead us along the right path. Oh, lead us, oh God, lead us, lead us, so that when our enemies stay, when they are waiting for us, by the time we get to that junction that they are waiting, we will pass and we will not be, we will pass, we, we, we will not be burnt, we will not be buttered, we will not give in to their plans, to their desires. We will not give in, we will not give in, we will not give in, oh God, we will not give in. Ah, show us the right path, our God. Point out the road for us to follow. Lead us by your truth, Jesus, and teach us, because you are the one who saves us. We know that you are the one who saves us, oh God. We know, we know, we know, we know. So we put our hope in you. We put our hope in you, dear God. We put our hope in you. We're not, we're not willing to do this on our own. We're not planning to, you know, know your way by ourselves. We are leaning on you, because it is you who has the will and to do. We are leaning on you for the strength, for the, for, 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 for the strength to will, and then for the grace to do. In the name of the Lord Jesus, in the name of Jesus, in the end of our life, we said that it's Ryo is a friend of God, Dami is a friend of God, Sipai was a friend of God, Abigail was a friend of God, Amajisno was a friend of God. And he said, oh, we live the life of God. And like, he does everywhere we went, doing good. And that would be our testimony, would not be the multitude of how much we have gathered. It would not be the many friends that we made, but it would be the life that your life that it would be, it would be your life that be, oh God, help us, help us, Lord Jesus. Help us, Lord Jesus. Help us, Lord Jesus. Help us, Lord Jesus. Thank you, Father. In Jesus' name we have prayed. Amen. 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 Thank you, Father. All right. Um. Wants to share what's on your heart, okay, round up tonight.
Praise God. So I, one of the things that stood out, right, I don't know, it stood out. One of the things I realized from this particular chapter passing, you were today, was the fact that David understood the correlation between walking in the right path and living a victorious life. Because he does, I feel, I just felt like he was able to, I don't know at what point he got the understanding, but I feel like he was able to draw a parallel between him walking in the, in the, in the path of, or in being led by God, and then living a victorious life around, because inasmuch as we understand that in this, in this verse, he was, he was talking about, um, the, the enemies, he was talking about, eh, like you said, the members of his own body. But again, you can also look at it on this, I mean, the fact that the moment, David realized at the moment he missed it in that area of his life, he becomes a fagging for even his physical enemies.
Hmm, hmm, hmm.
So, hmm, we working in the, in the, in the precepts or in the, in the, in the way of God. It keeps us even in our physical, even in our physical life, like, even, even in our physical environment. Like you just being there as a way of just putting this edge around us and just protecting us. So that was like, something that I got from this.
Thank you very much. I mean, um, the things that we, we go through or interact with, you know, basically as a result of what has already happened in physical. I know that we've heard that some, some years ago, but it's still true, actually. I get that a lot of things that have now physically manifested, life is spiritual firsts, life is spiritual firsts. There's no, in fact, it's too late to not know that life is spiritual first. So whatever it says that we experience physically is as a result of the state of our spirituality, quotes and not quotes. Thank you, Dami. Thank you. Um, does anyone else want to share anything? Does anyone else want to share anything?
All right. So I would want us to unmute our mics. Dami, Timolet, Abigail, please indulge me, indulge me, indulge me very, very much. I want us to mute our mics. Um, tomorrow is Amajisno's birthday. And I want us to sing for him. And what I'm gonna be having a call tomorrow, so you may as well enjoy. Enjoy our voices, however crooked and interesting they may sound. Enjoy it today, because tomorrow comes when no man can sing. All right. I want us to sing for Amajisno's last, tomorrow is his birthday. Um, I, I, I'm trying to remember what country you're in now. You're in the UK, right? Please confirm, so that we can sing UK. You, forget about how that we happen, we'll make it happen. Just confirm this. Originally in the UK, right? Yes. Oh, great. Perfect. You see, my accent has switched. I have, I have switched my accent. Okay, okay. I am on the count of two. I'm laughing at the thought of my accent. Oh, God, please help me. Don't let my own member of my body shame me in this moment, Lord. Hey. All right, um, in three. Let me, let me do it. Yeah, in three, two, one, let's go. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Oh, my goodness. Yeah, so in such stimulus was, ah, it can be, because you know, I don't know, I didn't, um, I don't know what you know, I didn't. Yeah, um, happy birthday, happy birthday. God bless you. Um, God bless you. God usher you into a season. Actually, we usher you into this season, that we bring you into that season, um, of fullness, of fullness all around. Um, there is, there is help on your sides, on your right, on your left, front, at your back. There is help for you in the name of Jesus. The Lord surrounds you with songs of the deliverance, surrounds you with mighty men that are able to help you push your destiny forward in the name of Jesus. The Lord increase your discernment. The Lord increase your discernment in the name of Jesus. And I pray for you in this moment, as you came to my house, the grace for stewardship the Lord gives to you in the name of the Lord Jesus. The grace for stewardship, you know, the Lord is asking you to steward in this season, but the grace for stewardship, the grace really steward in this season, the Lord will call you in the name of the Lord Jesus. It is a new season for you. Stay right on the strength of the Lord in the name of Jesus. Amen. Amen. Happy birthday. We love you. Okay, so, um, if there be none other. Please, as I've sang, as I've sang, as I've sung. As I have now. They still have, no. Now that we, ah, Lord of Jesus. Atikori, mm-hmm. I, I mean, I understand you, but so I'm good. Atikori, sing, please. Tomorrow, send our Jolo. I don't wanna hear that, um, oh, you know what? I'm in, I'm in the UK, I'm in London, and I don't think you're in London, no. Where are you? Where in the UK are you? Let's know, so that we can know how to really deal with you. That's a joke. So we can know how to, you know, switch the accent, because I know that. You're in London, eh, we? Oh, I sincerely apologize. Um, okay, so you're in London. And now that, I, I mean, we do not care, but you're in London. Um, all that matters is if you laugh, dear, if you try it, all that matters is you send our Jolo rice. So that we may make merry and be happy on your behalf. Um, so yeah, please send our rice. I don't know. Um, I, I, I like it, Smokey. Thank you, chicken. Oh my God, I'm still recording. Um, for the online people, sorry, sorry, sorry. Good night. Eh, let me continue what I was saying.